We'll call this November 9, 2023 Reno County Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Staff, will you please call a roll?
Schwertiger.
Here.
Strand.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Seltzer.
Here.
Macklin.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Durtson.
Here.
Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. This is part of the process we have in place in the county for us, for this board, to take input from the public on drafts that we have put together. We appreciate your time and we appreciate your participation. Board, I'll trust that in your packet you have reviewed the minutes from the October 19 meeting. Chairman, I move for approval of minutes as submitted.
Say it.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. October 19, 2023 minutes are approved. To ensure the rights of all parties of interest and to provide an opportunity for each party to address the Planning Commission in an orderly manner, the Planning Commission will follow the fact-finding procedures. This fact-finding procedure tonight. We'll hear your presentation from the staff on the draft regulations. We will entertain questions from the Planning Commission and members to staff about the regulations, if we have any. The motion to vote to accept final revisions to the draft regulations. At that time, we will accept public comments by the audience members. Questions from the Planning Commissioner? At that point, we'll have questions from, when we're done with the public comments, questions from the Planning Commission members that will be with the staff. And if we are done hearing everyone's voice, then I want to reiterate that we want to hear everyone's voice. When we are done hearing everyone's voice in this manner, we will close the public hearing. At that point, the Planning Commission discussion and possible recommendation to adopt the regulations, that's the path that we will be taking. During the public comment portion of the hearing, each person wishing to comment shall first state their name and address for the public record. Each person will be provided five minutes to comment on the proposed text amendments. Only one such occasion will be allowed for each participant to the voting. Comments shall be addressed to the Planning Commission only and not to individual commission members, staff, or other audience members. The chairman may grant extra time to an individual to finish a sentence or a thought at my discretion. During the public comment, during the Planning Commission may not answer any questions from the public. This is a time where we are taking information from you. The public hearing will remain open until everyone has had a chance to speak. After all public testimony is received, the public hearing will be closed. The public hearing may be recessed periodically for short breaks during the course of the proceedings. A lot of time for each break and anticipated time for resumption of the hearing will be announced by the chairman. Public hearings shall not resume prior to that announced time. During any recess, no one other than the county staff is permitted to approach a commission member to discuss any matter pertaining to the case. At all times, commission members will comply with the provisions of the Kansas Open Meetings Act pertaining to communications among themselves. The public hearing may be recessed to a future date, time, and place to the extent deemed necessary by the commission. Likewise, deliberations of the commission following the conclusion of the public hearing may take place at a later date, time, and place to be decided by the commission. That is dependent on the circumstances then existing. In such event, the date, time, and place of any subsequent meetings will be announced by the chairman prior to recess or adjournment. Notice of the continuation of the meeting will be posted on the county website and sent to news media outlets. With that, is there a motion to open the public hearing on case 2023-10, a request by Planning Commission for a text amendment? To the Table of Contents page, the creation of Article 15-105, Paragraph 14A, and the creation of Article 25, Solar Energy Systems, of the April 2016 edition of the Reno County zoning regulations.
Move.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions? Staff, will you please call a roll?
Schwertiger.
Present.
Strand.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Here.
Seltzer.
Yes.
Macklin.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Durtson.
Yes.
Okay, our public hearing is open. At this time, we'll have a presentation for staff on the draft regulations.
Mark Monatchen, county planner. Last month, commission, we discussed the solar regulation document, and the commission had some additional minor changes, as you may recall. I'm going to go over those changes now with the commission. After I go over those changes, I'm going to ask the commission to make any additional changes that you may have to that document or to make a motion to accept those final changes. I just want to clarify that the motion is just for the changes that you made to the document last month or this present time. It's not going to be the motion to, say, recommend approval to the county commissioners. I just want to make that clear to everybody. It's just a motion to accept those changes that we did last month. Now, those changes are already in the document that you received, but they were not highlighted. I just want to go over them and make sure that what I understood the board wanted is what is in the document that is present. So, as you know, there's three text amendments to this proposal. The first one is an amendment to our Table of Contents, and I actually do have one minor change to that on the back page. I failed to add the Table of Contents to actually being amended. As you see on the back page, I have Article 25, I have the Article 15, and when that was going to be possibly adopted, I did not add the Table of Contents. So, just a little minor change with that document. The second amendment is to Article 15, 105, 14A, and that is going to require a conditional use permit to establish a commercial solar farm. So, that is Article 15-1. No changes from that document. Of course, we have the creation of Article 25, which regulates commercial and residential solar development. So, I'll go through several minor changes that we had to that document. On Article 25, 102-2, which is on page 25-1, we added, except for the commercial wind energy conversion system zoning district. You may recall that, I believe it was Commissioner Schaefer that noticed that we had left out that zoning district, so I added that little phrase to the document. The next change is Article 25, 107-3, which is actually on page 25-5, and we're looking at the second paragraph of that document. I added the words in the second paragraph, "by the applicant," I believe. That was brought up by Commissioner Seltzer to request just a little more clarification about who is responsible for doing that. The other change that I have just came in literally this afternoon, and in your documents on your table, you have a letter from the Cheney Lake Watershed Incorporated organization. That one-page letter essentially asked that they be removed from being notified of a project here. And so, the second change is to scratch out the Cheney Lake Watershed District as a organization that should be copied in and contacted on all kind of correspondence to gauge their opinion on the project. They do not want to be notified for that, and their explanation is in their folder. The next change is Article 25, 108-2D, and that is on page 25-7. I changed the fourth word there to "project." I believe I had a different word there, and so it's actually "project." That was another change that we had noticed. The next change is Article 25, 108-12C, which is on page 25-11. I added the phrase, "removal of land within a regulatory floodway by a letter of map change" or LOMC process is also prohibited. Now, we discussed development of a project in a floodplain, floodway, and we would like to prohibit an applicant from trying to go in and change a floodway by adding, say, filter to remove it from the floodplain regulations, and so we added that verbiage there. The next change is Article 25, 110-4, which is on page 25-13. At the end of that paragraph there, I added, "which shall include the decommissioning of the facility." As I recall, we had a different form of that word there. It should have been decommissioned. I said maybe decommissioned, so it should be decommissioning of the facility. On the next page, 25-14, Article 25, 110, number nine. We had a lot of discussion on this topic, as you recall, last month, and I added, "a groundwater monitoring plan may be developed. Details of the plan will be in the developer's agreement." Lastly, on the back page, which is page 25-16, regarding residential solar, we had some changes in number one and number two. Number one shall now state that all ground-mounted private solar energy systems shall be permitted on a parcel as an accessory use and comply with the minimum setback requirements found in Article 13. I want to clarify that a little bit, the language we previously had, I don't believe clarified that a residential solar project is an accessory use, and I want to make sure that that was clarified, that no further permitting is required to put residential solar on a person's property other than getting a zoning permit. The second one deals with the height of residential solar, and that is changed to 20 feet. I believe previously we had 15 feet. So, those are the changes that we had to the document from last month. I would also call to your attention, in the late hour here, we did receive correspondence from the city of Wichita, and so that is also in your packet. I won't really go over the details of that document right now, but that's part of the public record, and you can certainly look at that document as you leave. So, right now, the purpose of this public hearing is for you to gather public input on the document that you guys created. After the public input and the close of the public hearing, you will have another opportunity to make additional changes to the document before making a recommendation to the county commissioners. Staff is actually a part of that public hearing process, and so I have two comments for this board. The first one is regarding Article 25, 110, number nine, which is on page 25-14, and I would request that the Planning Commission eliminate that document. Without specific details on the groundwater monitoring plan, I think it's going to be very hard to come up with what you would want to see for a watering plan, and so I would request that that be eliminated. The second one is Article 25, 113, which is page 25-16, and that has to do with residential solar. I don't believe that we should be really regulating residential solar. We don't do that now, and I don't believe that that's something that we want to get into. If you want, I could expand on my thoughts on that, but those are my two comments that I have and the two requests I have for the Planning Commission, and so I would stand for questions from the board.
So, to clarify, that's just the 25, 110, or item nine, and the whole paragraph 25-113.
Yeah, the whole article, 25, 113, is what I would guess. The reason being is setbacks in a lot of our zoning districts are eight feet, 10 feet, so you can put a relatively large structure, eight foot, 10 foot, from somebody's property line, but just a zoning permit without any kind of public hearing, and so why do we want to regulate a solar panel? Is eight to 10 feet really that big of a view? So, those are my comments and my requests, and so...
Any questions for staff?
I move we accept the changes to Article 25 and the Table of Contents and Article 15 as presented by staff.
I second that motion.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Point of order here, Mark. Should we just call a roll on this?
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be good.
All right. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Just want to clarify, Alan, you're also agreeing to the removal of that paragraph nine, or Article nine in Article 25, 110?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, no.
Yeah, I was moving to accept them as they're presented tonight, and we can discuss.
It doesn't...
I was running under the assumption we would discuss those later.
Those are just part of my public hearing comments, so the motion would not include the removal of the residential or the removal of that other article regarding the groundwater.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification. That was an assumption on my part, so, sorry about that.
That was my second also.
Okay, great. Been moved and seconded. Good discussion. Staff, will you please call a roll?
Schwertiger.
Yes.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Seltzer.
Yes.
Macklin.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Durtson.
Yes.
Okay, we have a document to work for.
Yes.
At this time, we'll open up opportunity for you to give your input. I want to remind you that each person comes to the podium and states your name and address for the record. You'll be allowed five minutes to state your case. Again, if you need a... I'll give you a little bit of leeway to finish a thought if you bumped that five minutes, but we want to hold to that five minutes, and quite true and fast. So, at this time, we'll just get started. Who wants to be first?
I timed myself, it was four minutes and 37 seconds.
Don't waste it.
Have you started it already?
You're going to have to run to the back, Mark, yet.
Martin Westfall, 3907 East Irish Creek Road, Haven. Tonight, I'm going to give you a short history lesson about Cheney Reservoir and the Cheney Lake Watershed. So, bear with me because this is important, especially if you're not aware of everything, because I learned a lot, just doing a lot of research. So, the reservoir at Cheney Lake covers 9,500 acres. It was completed in 1965, and it's an important source of drinking water for the city of Wichita and other communities surrounding Wichita. So, 70% of Wichita and those communities get their water from the Cheney Reservoir. So, the lake was built also for recreation purposes. The reservoir is a very big deal, not only for Wichita drinking water, but for recreation aspects. It's the fifth-largest lake in Kansas, and the park is the second-largest lake in Kansas with 400,000 to 500,000 visitors a year. It's also listed as one of the top 10 lakes in the lower 48 states for sailing and windsurfing, and boasts some of the best fishing in Kansas. Farmers and landowners work in partnership with the city of Wichita to protect Cheney Reservoir, again, the primary source of Wichita's water supply. So, what is the water source for the lake? It's the Nineska River and the watershed that drains and sheds water into the lake. So, the Cheney Lake watershed covers 633,000 acres, of which the majority of those acres is in Reno County. 99% of the watershed is used for agricultural purposes. So, a watershed includes topography, geology, and soil types, which in turn influence the infiltration characteristics and erosion potential. The biggest problems are runoff and pollution. As the water runs over and through the watershed, it picks up and carries contaminants in soil downstream. So, why am I giving you this history lesson? Well, because of what I just said. The Cheney Lake watershed includes topography, geology, and soil types. As an example of erosion potential, this past spring, a couple in Georgia who lived downstream from 100 megawatt solar facility filed a lawsuit against the solar developer and the construction company as their 21-acre trophy fishing lake was repeatedly stained bright red by silt and sediment, and it turned their lake into a mud hole during the construction phase. So, the federal jury ruled in favor of the couple and awarded them millions of dollars. Of course, there is an appeal happening, but the point is the sediment traveled downstream into their lake. Currently, 2,500 acres of land has been leased and filed with the Reno County Register of Deeds for solar development in Reno County. A majority of these leases lie within the watershed that I'm talking about. A major concern for utility-scale solar development is the erosion and contamination potential in this area traveling downstream into the Cheney Lake. Tonight, you're going to hear from citizens and landowners of Reno County regarding the proposed solar regulations. I'm also giving, Mark, petitions signed by 361 citizens who are requesting that you include in these solar regulations a prohibition of commercial utility-scale solar projects in the Cheney Lake Watershed area in Reno County. Again, we are asking that this prohibition be included in the regulations. Also, as a side note, in the regulations, unless you've already changed it, KDWPT is now just KDWP. So, the T was for tourism, and that's been moved to a different department.
Hi, my name is Charlene Slickah. My address is 11510 East Irish Creek Road, Haven, Reno County. Before I state my request, I do want to thank each of you sitting around the table who is volunteering their time to serve on the Reno County Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm sure this position comes with a lot of criticism and not a lot of pay, or probably no pay. But I am grateful for your willingness to thoughtfully consider and make informed decisions with regards to solar regulations. These regulations do, in fact, have the potential to significantly impact the residents of this county, not just today, but for decades to come. My ask today is for the Planning Commission to include in the regulations a ban which prohibits the build of a commercial-scale solar farm in the Cheney Lake Watershed District of Reno County. Based on numerous published articles in our news media and recognized journals, and even actually on our EPA section of our U.S. government website, it's universally accepted that the solar panels contain materials which are classified as toxic, and they are considered hazardous waste at the time of disposal. So, universal knowledge, widely accepted. It's a known. But there are quite a few unknowns. How to recycle them? Just last month, the government, our U.S. government's putting together a plan, a proposal, you know, how do we recycle these solar panels? How long will they last? That's another unknown. Projected lifespan, anywhere from 15 to 30 years. However, if you ask our neighbors to the north, Scottsbluff, Nebraska, they had a commercial solar farm. It lasted four years. This summer, it was destroyed in a matter of minutes with one hailstorm. So, you know, where will these panels be taken once they're decommissioned? Again, our neighbors to the north are figuring out, it's going to the landfill, more than likely, the majority of them. And that kind of lines up with CBS News that says more than 90% of solar panels end up in landfills when they are deemed damaged, defective, or reach their end of usefulness. My question is, okay, what about that other 10%? If it's not going to the landfill, where is it going? But another known, I can tell you, God is not manufacturing more land, okay? Again, where are these solar panels going? Does Reno County have the capacity to begin filling the landfill with commercial-scale solar panels? Are there restrictions when it comes to dumping hazardous waste? Anyway, again, back to that 10%. So, if they're not going to the landfill, where are those panels ending up? Are they going to deteriorate on top of the soil which they were originally installed on? Or perhaps they're going to be buried underground where they were originally installed? If this happened in the Cheney Lake Watershed District, does this have the ability to impact our soil or create water runoff issues? Several decades ago, there were people in our government who made the decision to bury hazardous waste here in Reno County near the Yoder area. If I was to ask each of our Reno County Commissioners today, you know, did those decisions have lasting impact on our county, particularly the Yoder area? I'm sure that each one of them would say yes. There's soil contamination, there's well-water contamination. And I understand with each decision, there's usually a risk-benefit analysis, so we kind of know what the risk is of a commercial-scale solar farm. Soil contamination and water contamination, what's the benefit? I was informed that the solar scale, commercial scale, the solar farm planned for Reno County, the energy harvested from this farm is leaving the state of Kansas, so it's not going to result in a benefit in terms of reduced energy costs for the citizens of Reno County. And I'm sure that there's other benefits that come along with this, but do those benefits outweigh the risk? Again, the risk of potentially contaminating Cheney Lake, which not only provides revenue and is an economic benefit from a recreation standpoint, I know we just paid our taxes, we also applied for, you know, spent additional monies to get the state permit so we can use that park. But again, as somebody pointed out earlier, it also provides up to 70% of the drinking water for the city of Wichita. And it looks like I might be at time. Is that correct? So, again, as you're focusing on these regs, I'm asking you to navigate this pathway using the data available and take action which is appropriate for the citizens of this county and surrounding communities, and ban the build of a commercial-scale solar farm in Reno County's Cheney Lake Watershed District.
Casey Schwartz, 207 Buckskin Road. First of all, a big thank you to the Planning Commission and county staff. I appreciate how much thought and effort you put into this project. Overall, I think the Planning Commission has produced a fair and well-thought-out set of regulations. While I feel the 500-foot setback for buildings is excessive for something only 20 feet tall, it does address non-participating property owners' visual concerns in a very robust way. I'd like to talk about solar panels for a minute. They're mostly made of glass and aluminum. What minute chemicals are in them are locked into the panels. Expected lifespan is 30 years or more. For every unit of energy used to make a panel, we get 50 to 100 units of energy back out of them. Solar panels are totally silent, and the systems that support them make very little noise during the day and virtually none at night. Modern solar panels are inherently anti-glare, as glare... Modern solar panels are inherently anti-glare, as glare actually reduces their energy output. Solar panels don't cause earthquakes. I would never have thought of saying that, but a few years ago, we have earthquakes. They're expected, they don't pollute our water with nitrates, they don't produce foul odors that linger for miles, they don't create spills that contaminate our land and water, they don't take vast quantities of water to operate, they don't leak underground and result in explosions, sometimes threatening an entire city. If destroyed by powerful Kansas storms, the resulting debris poses no detrimental impact to our environment. The materials used in a solar farm are valuable and easily removed and recycled. They won't be abandoned to rot and threaten future generations. Amazingly, it would only take around 900 acres of solar farm to power all of Reno County's homes, which is just 1/8 to 1% of our total land. Solar energy is homegrown, U.S. energy that stays here and reduces our dependence on foreign energy. It also provides a significant positive impact for our county and our taxpayers. Due to shading concerns, there is ample space between panels for ground to hold moisture, and farming and grazing is even possible. Herbicides used to control weeds are the same as those used currently in our food production. Renewable energy has much community support. Fields of solar panels are even visually appealing to some. To our landowners, the number-one threat to keeping farmland in the family is low-density suburban sprawl, which permanently takes acres out of production. Renewable energy leases are one of the best tools a landowner can have to ensure the land stays in the family and remains productive. For farmers, a dependable source of base income can be a lifeline and provide substantial support for their operations. And now for property rights. In correspondence sent earlier to this commission, the planning commission, a commenter asked them to ban commercial solar to improve our relationships with our family, friends, and neighbors. I feel a county ban on solar would have the exact opposite effect. Property rights are sacred in America. Finally, hats off to the planning commission and staff. You've done an excellent job of balancing both participating and non-participating landowner rights with your proposed regulations. Thank you.
My name is Jessica Schmidt. I live at 13114 East Lake Cable Road, Haven. I appreciate your efforts. I'm nearing the end of an eight-year term on the school board, Haven, so I know what it's like to give graciously your time and, you know, do fun things like this. Just thought it might be interesting to compare from a regulatory standpoint. Somebody had some really thick paper that gave me this copy, but this is 15 pages, your solar, proposed solar regs. This is the Reno County Sanitation Code, printed on cheap copy paper, so it doesn't look very thick, but it's 50 pages long, printed front and back. This regulates poop, okay? This is regulating something I don't know very much about, so. I just thought I'd point out a couple of comparisons between the regulations. In the sanitation code, one of the things I found interesting was the, it was developed with a task force starting in 1986, and the task force is pretty lengthy. In fact, there were, there's a whole page of tasks, task forces that worked on the regulations. The first original included engineers, residents, health department, all kinds of people. And I thought it was really neat that it involved residents, and I'm not sure, I'm not real familiar with the process that was used here to develop these regulations, but I didn't see any credits given to anybody. So just, that was just something I noted. And then the other thing that I thought was interesting to point out was, in the sanitation code, it does specifically mention in the purpose, so the very first part, it relates or notes that part of the purpose is to include minimizing health and safety concerns. So if, you know, we're regulating the health and safety concerns of, I'm going to say gray water, okay, I'm going to have to use the other word for now. So I just thought that was interesting because I don't see really health and safety being dealt with in the solar regulations, so I'd really like to see that bolstered a little bit. You know, again, I don't know that much about solar, and I don't know if that was addressed in developing these regulations. Also, the solar regulations relate to property, excuse me, being near, excuse me. 500 feet from a non-participating landowner's principal building. So if my principal building, my home, is near a solar field, it, you know, if I'm right at the corner of a property line, I could be really pretty close to that solar field. In the sanitation code, we taught, it references property lines. So you can't construct like a septic system or a lagoon, depending on which one. Septic system has to be 50 feet from a property line, lagoon has to be 100 feet from a property line, and I think that's important. My brokerage, I have a real estate brokerage, and I just might also mention that we have a development listed out two miles from this area that is kind of being leased for solar, and I just think it's important to consider that because from a taxpayer standpoint, I think you make a lot more, stand to gain a lot more, and this is rugged land. I mean, I don't really know that there's a lot of great uses out there, but homes are out there, and homes are trying to be built out there. And so I think it's just important to consider the highest and best use of property and the highest, best use of how to generate some revenue in the terms of property taxes for the county. I know that's not really part of your regulations here, but I thought I'd make note of that. Thank you for your time. Good luck.
My name is Jane Tolan. Address is 6109 East Pleasant Valley Road, Haven. And I would, like the others, like to thank the planning commission for the work that they're doing on this project for Reno County. Once again, Reno County is being targeted by a large industrial corporation. This time, Next Era is promoting commercial utility-scale solar projects throughout the county. Make no mistake, solar farms, as they are deceitfully referred to, are nothing more than large-scale power plants. Everything about a solar power plant is bigger. They require more acreage to build, oftentimes hundreds and even thousands of acres are involved. They are extremely costly in their construction and maintenance, and they destroy vast areas of ecosystems and wildlife habitats. Harvey County has stated in their regulations that, and I quote, "Preserving agricultural farm ground and rural landscape is a high priority of a comprehensive plan," unquote. I strongly encourage Reno County to consider and include this priority in their regulations as well. If you have the foresight to calculate the all-inclusive picture, no dollar amount can be substituted for keeping prime agricultural ground intact in this county, and no dollar amount will restore the sanctity of rural life once it's destroyed with commercial-grade solar projects. Living across the road from an 80-acre solar panel is not my idea of rural living. There are several major areas of concern that I have with introducing commercial-scale solar projects in Reno County. Like others here this evening, the decommissioning of solar panels and the disposal of hazardous materials and lithium batteries into our landfills has me concerned. Once again, I worry about meeting the oversight and the extensive regulations that were involved with the wind energy and the turbines. But there is one major concern that I would like to focus on this evening, and that is the protection of the Cheney Reservoir watershed. This watershed must be aggressively protected. The majority of this watershed in Cheney Reservoir are located in Reno County. This reservoir and its underlying equus beds are responsible for 70% of Wichita's water supply, as well as marketing water to nearby cities such as Derby, Andover, Bel Air, Ketchikan, Park City, Bentley, and more. This is a 100-year multi-project built in 1962 to 65 to act primarily as a water supply, flood control, and a wildlife area. When the Citizens Management Committee, CMC, continually works with farmers, ranchers, and landowners to prioritize goals in reducing nutrients, pollutants, and sediment from reaching the lake, do we really want to undermine Wichita's water supply with the construction of nearby large-scale power plants? Do we want camn and lead leaching into the ground and increasing soil erosion and runoff into the lake? Cheney Lake watershed is rated as a Category 1 watershed, meaning that it needs restoration and continual protection to sustain its water quality. According to the RAPS Plan, and RAPS stands for Watershed Restoration and Protection Strategies, Cheney Reservoir ranks seventh out of 92 watersheds in the state for restoration priority. Since the majority of the watershed is located in Reno County, we have a huge responsibility in protecting this area. Does Reno County really want to impede or even reverse the years of progress that have been made on creating outdoor recreational space to lure visitors and revenue to Cheney Lake every year? Does Reno County want to invest in destroying the ecosystems and the wildlife habitats that have taken generations to build in the watershed area? I don't believe we do. If you are someone who does not live in this area and you are located outside of Reno County or even out of state, protecting this area may not mean very much to you. But as someone who spends the rest of my life living here, I do care. So here we go again. Once more, Reno County faces life-altering and generational repercussions to both its rural and urban populations. And once more, citizens of Reno County are stepping forward and calling for the representatives on our planning commission and our county commissioners to act responsibly and aggressively in protecting our rights. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
My name is Kevin Chonals, and I live at 16818 South Kent Road, Haven. Good evening. I am and have been an agronomist in Reno County for over 30 years. I have recently become more involved in soil health and regenerative agriculture as a passion to complement my work as an agronomist. The reason I am bringing this up is to let you know I study soils, but also look at how we can improve them to intake more soil moisture and store carbon to reduce it in the atmosphere. Along with this, I have been somewhat of a contact advisory role for the Cheney Lake watershed. The area for this proposed solar farm falls into the drainage district of the Cheney Lake watershed. I am not speaking for them, but what I know is that the city of Wichita has spent thousands of dollars, if not more, to protect the life of the Cheney watershed, to reduce erosion and pollutants from entering in the Cheney Lake. They gave monies to help landowners in the area do practices that will reduce soil runoff and pollutant runoff. They helped with improving fencing watering systems, make the soils more resilient for storing water and carbon. My concern with the proposed area you have chosen to install the solar panels is that we already have a fragile environment where the soil is shallow and is very conducive to erosion. You will remove the native fauna to a level and install the solar farm, then have to plant something to help hold the soils. And the new plants will never protect like the established grasses that are there. And all the time you're waiting for the replanted area to get established, it is susceptible to wind and water erosion. These areas have significant slope so that all the soil during heavy rainfall event would run right into the Cheney Lake. If you get the plants reestablished, then how are you going to maintain it? Most likely, it would need to be mowed around, which is a carbon-intensive practice that releases carbon into the atmosphere instead of the native grasses and grazing which stores carbon. There is also an issue with constantly trying to keep trees out of the solar panels. If they get started, you will have to, again, use mechanical and chemical means to control them, with the added chemicals always having the potential to wash into the Cheney Lake watershed. And just as an agronomist that works in the area, knowing what weeds will grow in the area, our current chemicals that we use do not control pig weeds very well at all. So we will have to increase the amount of chemicals to control the most likely weeds that will be growing in and under and around the panels. So the Reno County Soil Survey, which has been around for years and years, says that one of the main areas where you're proposing the watershed is, it's a renfro Vernon Association. And this association are gently sloping to steep reddish soils and areas cut in a few places by drainageways. The soils are moderately deep or shallow over clay shale. The association occupies a large area in the southeastern part of the county. Renfro and Vernon soils make up 85% of this association. The renfro are reddish acid soils that are moderately deep over clay shale. The Vernon soils have a profile similar to that of renfro soils, but they are shallower over shale. The deep reddish port soils along drainageways and shallow, non-arable Vernon soils make up the rest of this association. The renfro and Vernon soils do not take water in readily. They have low natural fertility, but crops grow on all the soils of the association, respond well to fertilizer, runoff is high, and erosion is a hazard. This is why I don't think this is a good idea to put the solar farm in this area. You are taking a large area of a fragile native environment and exposing it to desertification. Once the solar panels are installed, sunlight will have a difficult time, if ever, penetrating to the soil to reestablish vegetation. Over time, this will significantly increase the chances for desertification in this area. I don't see how installing solar panels that are supposed to help reducing carbon footprint for electricity but destroys a native system that is already putting carbon into the soil is a win for any of us. If it wasn't for government subsidies, this would not be a viable alternative for power generation. Lastly, how much will this actually decrease land values in the area? Although I am not a fan of increased housing development on ag land, I would guess this will put a stop to it in southeast Reno County. Who wants to build an expensive new house next to a solar farm when they aren't, when they won't even benefit from the power that is generated, and your property values will most likely decrease because no one wants to buy your house next to a solar farm? Thank you so much for your time.
My name is Susan Hilton, 10408 East Moose Creek Road, Cheney. I live in the southeast portion of Reno County, right by Cheney Reservoir. I'm going to start off thanking you all, planning and zoning. You have to sacrifice your time for the citizens of Reno County to be here, and as somebody who volunteers quite a bit, I know that that is not always an easy thing to do. Obviously, you love our county, or you wouldn't be here. So hey, thank you very much for helping us to make it a better place to live. We are gathered tonight to discuss how to protect the citizens of Reno County's and the improper sightings of potential industrial solar facilities. So when this topic came up, I'm like, eh, I mean, it's glass in a field. I mean, I don't, at least it's not an ugly giant turbine that is invasive. So I thought, oh, not really my problem. I figure I'm a little bit of the average citizen when it comes to that initial feeling, and then reality hit. As somebody, like I said, who does volunteer As somebody, like I said, who does volunteer a lot, I'm like, you know, it is my civic duty to at least research it, find out, not just assume that it's going to be okay. Typically, anything industrial is going to have a negative impact. So, I started looking into it, and I was completely amazed by all of the negative impacts that solar, industrial solar, has. First of all, they're massive. They virtually render any land that they are on completely unusable for anything, which, for this area with the farmland, the Cheney Lake watershed that was mentioned, I mean, there are so many negative repercussions from taking over the land. They make noise. I mean, they make noise. Who knew that solar farms make noise? Because of the way the transformer is converting the DC into AC, there's actually a very annoying noise that is emitted from it. I had no idea. And I actually, I listened to a recording, and I just, I was amazed. Solar panels contain contaminants that are toxic. I honestly never thought about the panels. I thought, ah, it's just a piece of glass out there reflecting. I mean, I just, it wasn't on my radar. It's definitely not just a piece of glass out there. Panels contain hazardous wastes such as lead, cadmium, arsenic, and several other heavy metals. The chemical leaching that comes from mainly the breakage of these, that is a very serious threat. Some of the proposed industrial solar installations are within the Cheney Lake watershed, as mentioned. The purpose of the watershed is to help with the natural flow and of the area of Cheney Reservoir, and of course, one of the purposes of Cheney Reservoir historically has always been to provide water to the city of Wichita. I would not be interested in living in an area that has possible ground contamination because of leaching from toxic chemicals. I pretty much think I don't stand alone on that. Everybody's going to have that philosophy. I live right next to the reservoir, half a mile, so the thought of my children playing in the water, because we're there year-round, and possibly consuming some of the toxic water, I mean, that's terrifying to me. The only way to really, truly protect that watershed area and all the water that is being used for so many different recreational and living purposes is to just completely ban, prohibit utility-scale solar in the watershed area. It's just, that is the only feasible way. I mean, just the health and the safety of your citizens, that's really where it comes down to. So, Kansas weather. We have a few storms every year that destroys cars, windows, trees, whatever. These are tempered glass, so they will break. And when they break, that's when all the crazy starts with all the gases that are leached into the ground. Again, Cheney Lake watershed area, the closest to, so, okay, then, so when they break, where do they go? Do we take them over to Stutzman's? Recycle? Nope. I talked to them, they do not take that. I don't know. Solar panel heaven? Nope. The actual, the closest facility that I found is Houston, Texas. So, if we're looking for something that is a positive impact on our environment, shipping them all the way down to Texas, you know, that, I mean, let's think about what, where, how's that balance? How's that balance out? When it comes to decommissioning, do we trust billion-dollar companies to do right by us just because they want to? Well, we probably shouldn't go down that rabbit hole again. Any decommissioning has to be in writing. You can't just think, well, they'll be okay, they'll do right by us. No. Every single part of decommissioning, the length it takes for them to get the actual panels out, what they're going to do with all of that, what happens to the roads, what happens to the property, that all has to be spelled out, every single bit of it. If you don't do that, then you are not being responsible in protecting the citizens of this county. And I know that you've been sent the regulations from Harvey County and, I believe, Butler County. They've just done the same, gone through the same thing. They did a great job of just really spelling all of that out. I mean, you really should study that and just go by those basic concepts of, let's protect our citizens.
Sorry, I'm going to have to interrupt you. Your time's up.
Okay. Oh, I didn't hear the beep. Well, actually, I was done, so can I at least say thank you? Thank you again for your time, and I hope you consider my remarks. I'm not even known for being a talker.
I'm Jackie Holberg, and I live at 22 Tomahawk Road in Hutchinson, Kansas. I'm the general manager of Ark Valley Electric, and that's located at 10 East 10th and South Hutchinson. And we serve 5,000 meters in rural Kansas, a lot of it here in Reno County. And we do everything that we can to decrease the cost for our members to provide them electricity. And by doing that, one of the things that we have done is installed solar. We are regulated on how much we can install, and that's limited to 1 megawatt per substation. And beyond that, it's just 2.3 megawatts for our whole system. So, we do have one installed in western Reno County, and then we had, previously had another one approved here last year. We want to redesign it a little bit and add another one just to get the most benefit for our members by reducing our demand with that solar. The energy that it produces goes directly to our members and saves them potentially around $100,000 every year. So, my ask today is that you consider our solar project of just 1 megawatt not commercial because it will be used by our members. It's not really a commercial solar. It's used for our members, won't be transported out of state or anywhere else, so that's my ask. And a lot of the members are here tonight as well, so I hope that they understand what that does for them. Thank you. I can use all my five minutes.
Address 14211 East Whitewood Street in Wichita. So, I have certainly studied, as well as some of the members of the audience, the history of Cheney Reservoir, the benefit that Wichita receives from that, which is greatly appreciated, along with other communities that are close to it. So, that watershed is extremely valuable. If it does get damaged, and I believe that there's a high probability that it could from hailstorms and other things that could impact its operation, that would be a tremendous detriment and loss to this community and certainly to Wichita. I'll make one additional comment with respect to the couple in Georgia that had a solar installation placed next to their recreation area. The actual federal jury settlement for that case was $133.5 million. They lost a tremendous amount of value and benefit in that recreational facility, and the jury certainly agreed that that was, needed to be compensated pretty significantly, and they acted upon it. Speaking of Scottsbluff, Nebraska, you know, that, I'm guessing that might have been a 20-acre installation designed to release about 4.4 megawatts. And the June 23 storm that hit that facility took out 1,396 out of about 1,440 panels, totally destroyed. And they were taken to a landfill. There's no other place for them. So, to accept that that's something that is not a high risk, I just disagree strongly. I think that with multiple hailstorms, all the weather-related incidents that happen in this state, that solar panels are just not a good place for that to be implanted. And I certainly disagree with the suggestion that the toxic materials that are in those panels are not a risk. They're a high risk. And so, when you have a hailstorm such as what happened in Scottsbluff, Nebraska occur, there will be toxic materials released out of that installation. There is no question about it. You can't stop it. Cannot stop it. And there are carcinogens and other things that you just don't want to dump into the Cheney Lake watershed is a small subset of the Ark, Lower Arkansas River Valley watershed. So, next year does not have small plans. When they go for something of magnitude that they have done in other places, it makes a big difference. And I have been in Marion County, Harvey County, now here, because people have called on me to speak about the facts that relate to these installations, solar and wind. And renewable energy is not free, ever. It is not free. They don't buy that logic. If they did not have massive subsidies, massive subsidies, from the United States government in this country, or Germany, where they have them in that country, there is no way that they could economically survive. No way. Period. End of story. So, dollars coming out of your pockets, my pockets, everybody's pockets that live in this United States of America, and it's not helping anything. I'm going to share, how much time do I have left?
A minute. Minute. I turned on the alarm.
Well, I don't have enough time to share the last story, but I'm just saying that I have had some experience with these systems, testimonies and other things. Sort of the Kansas Legislature dealt with this matter while I was there. And so, I strongly urge the Planning Commission and to pass off to the county commissioners to not allow these industrial energy conversion systems to operate in Reno County. That's, thank you.
My name is Dorothy Barnett. I live at 129 West 25th in Hutchinson, Kansas. Want to take a moment to say thank you for your time, for your service, and to talk to you a little bit about my concerns around what you've heard here tonight. I'm speaking from several perspectives today. I've been a resident of Reno County for 47 years, growing up near Turon. I was the coordinator of the Reno County Wind Energy Task Force, and for the past 12 years, I've directed a state-based nonprofit, the Climate and Energy Project. We focus on advancing clean energy, the clean energy economy to create economic impacts and benefits and a healthy environment. So it may seem strange for me to bring up the Reno County Wind Energy Task Force at a solar regulation hearing, but I think it's important to think about the economic benefits that our county lost when despite overwhelming support from Siemens-Gomezza, the Huch Reno County Chamber, and two out of three county commissioners at the time, along with Reno County landowners and citizens, we ultimately pushed wind development to other places in Kansas. We now have the opportunity to attract utility-scale solar so we can reap the economic and environmental benefits the clean energy economy continues to bring to counties across our state. Solar in the United States is forecasted to triple in the next five years, and this year alone in the U.S., it has grown 23%. Solar's visual and sound impact is among the lowest of all electricity generation, and it poses little to no wildlife or environmental impact if it's sighted properly. While Kansas currently does not have any utility-scale projects over 20 megawatts, there are several being proposed across the state. This technology is not new to the region or to the rest of the country, but because of our vast wind resource, it's had a lower, a slower start here in Kansas. Utility-scale solar projects can bring substantial economic benefits to counties who host them. A recent University of Kansas report analyzed the impacts of a 320-megawatt solar array with a potential battery storage component and determined short-term benefits during construction and shortly after of $31 million to counties that were hosting that project, and long-term project benefits of $218 million of economic activity in the region over the 30-year lifespan of the project. Like the wind regulations before this, the solar regulations that have been put together by the County Planning Commission are reasonable and they are well-thought-out. They do protect the health and safety of our county residents, and they give clear guidelines to developers who may want to cite utility-scale projects here in Reno County. I brought with me tonight some utility-scale solar myths and fact sheets. One of the things that we've been seeing over the last three to five years is a real push of misinformation about renewable energy, about wind, about solar, and about its impacts. And as I was listening to what was being said tonight, I checked off every myth that is widely known and widely spread, was shared here tonight. This sheet provides citing to all of the reports that this information came from. It's based on peer-reviewed science. It's not based on an internet search. It's not based on someone who's been paid by the fossil fuel industry for decades coming up and saying, "I know all about this." So you don't have to believe me, but you do need to look at the science, and you do need to find the sources of information as you're thinking about what's best for Reno County. I appreciate your time tonight. I know this is hard, and I thank you very much for all of your work.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Eckert. I live at 1902 North Main Street here in Hutchinson, Kansas. You'll have to, I have to apologize, I didn't have a whole lot of time to put my notes together, so I might jump around a little bit. The woman right before me said there's a lot of myths and things going around. There's a lot of opinions. My opinion is that we do not need the corporate solar energy anywhere in Reno County. You've heard a lot of the risk of the solar panels when they break, the leaching of all of the toxic chemicals that are in there that can harm our soil and water, especially in the Cheney Lake area, but not only in the Cheney Lake area, but any of our soil and water systems here in Reno County. Solar panels are not clean energy, as far as I'm concerned. The amount of technology- The amount of technology and whatever it takes to make them, and then also to discard them, like I said, right now, they just go into our landfills, and they are toxic waste. So they don't last the 15 to 30 years that they said that they last. Most of them lasted, I did my research, six years. It's the same thing with the wind turbines. I know that this is not for about turbines, but there's no place to discard the wind turbines either, or who takes them down once they don't work anymore? That's something that we really, if you want to keep the solar panels in Reno County at someplace, I really implore you to write in there how we're going to get rid of any of the fields once they don't use them anymore. Economic benefits, I know a lot of these corporate fields, the energy is planning on going out of state. Nextera, ultimately BlackRock, and all of these other entities that are funding these places, bring them in, and it's up to the taxpayers to pay for them. And what I mean by that is the transportation lines that it takes to take that energy out of state. They're putting transportation lines in southeast Kansas right now for another energy project, and the people decided they didn't want to do it. So now a, not a government, but a public company is given the permission to do eminent domain to their land, people's land. So there's like, there's so many millions of acres that are being taken out because of eminent domain to put in transportation lines. We don't need that to happen in Reno County. And then the transportation lines are ultimately paid for by the customers that are paying for that energy. The energy is going out of our state. So I implore you to really, really think about what this will cause, the economic conditions that it causes to the taxpayers or the energy utility payers, and then also the detriment to our soil and our water systems. Thank you.
Keep this short. Thank you very much. My name is Lydia Rossdine. I live here in Hutchinson, Kansas, born and raised in Kansas. Won't hit on all my notes now because good points have been made all evening. We'll go back to my most worrisome thought is the capital cost, the outlay for my grandchildren, my great-grandchildren. What will it be? And we have to know the bottom dollars first and foremost also. Then it went down to who then does pay for it? Who carries that burden from this day forward if the decision was made? Where will these batteries go for the storage? That's a problem everywhere. There's no place. They're going to cover our earth with rot of plastics, cancer-causing agent materials, and dump dirt over it? Who's destroyed Mother Earth more? And if I have any minutes left, the guy from Wichita can use them. But that is it. I do appreciate your time. It makes me nervous. I don't like public speaking. And space constraints, it's just going to hurt. It will not further the future for our county or our state. I like nuclear. It's clean.
My name is Wayne Mans from 149-18 East Maple Grove Road, Alhoub, Reno County. I've heard some comments, a lot of good comments this evening. I'm not much of a public speaker, but to Dorothy Barnett's point of the loss of benefit from the wind conversion system ban that was put into place, I don't know if you guys get out in that part of the county, but there is a flurry of building, of revenue that will come to this county. Like as soon as that ban went in place, the foundations went in. And that's the real base that's going to be here for generations of people to contribute in their tax dollars for funds for Reno County. But I briefly went through the comprehensive plan to see how the solar, how these proposed solar regulations align with the comprehensive plan. And something that stuck out to me was one of the main goals highlighted in the comprehensive plan is to find and preserve a sense of place. Now, I'm not real sure what that means, but to me, a sense of place is closely tied to a sense of belonging in Reno County. This goal stuck out to me as completely contrary to the setbacks listed in the proposed regulations. In fact, by these regulations, a nonparticipating landowner can have a commercial-scale solar facility 100 feet from their property line. And I'm a little confused by this, but if you look down in the fencing regulation, if a six-foot-tall berm is established, that setback is reduced to 25 feet. Now, I don't know what a six-foot berm is going to do for hiding up to a 20-foot-tall solar panel array, or why that line is even in there. To me, it shouldn't be, as well as the regulation should be based up from property lines, not the principal building. It just seems like these regulations are pretty inadequate, and they're slanted more toward the developer than the citizens who we're actually trying to protect. Thank you.
My name is Andy Helton at 1040-8 East Smoots Creek Road. So I don't have a speech written, but I want to give you some of the facts that I know. Number one, don't make decisions based on whether or not the developer will sue you. Know that the developer will sue you. All right? That's a fact. We know that in this county. Point being, that was a common thread of the wind farm decision-making was, well, we'll get sued. You'll get sued. Just make decisions for the county. Forget about that. Fact number two, the thing that solves all of these problems are setbacks. That was true of the wind farm. That's true here. Proper setbacks. Setbacks that make sense. Setbacks that maybe go a little bit too far. Instead of saying, "Well, what's the minimum that we can do?" How about we go a little bit too far? Setbacks solve all these problems. The best setback being something like 500 miles. But you can't do that. And the third fact, and I guess I can't call this a fact, but we all know it's true that a lot of these studies from the wind industry, including what was given you there, we wouldn't believe a big oil study telling us oil's good, right? Don't necessarily believe studies, even if it's scientific and peer-reviewed. If there's anything about peer-review, just take that with a grain of salt. And misinformation, if anything we've learned in the last few years about misinformation, that sometimes misinformation ends up being the truth. And therefore, everybody that said it's misinformation was the actual misinformation. So I know it makes it tough on you guys to find the actual truth, but these studies, yeah, weigh those with a grain of salt. I thought I had a fourth fact, but I don't. I can't think of another. Thank you for your time.
My name is Angela Mans, and I live at 149-18 East Maple Grove Road. I'm not much of a public speaker, and honestly, I was hoping never to have to come up and speak again. But here I am tonight. And I first want to thank you for your time and service for our county. I know that your job is a volunteer position, and you spend countless hours helping develop regulations for our county. As a citizen of the county, we look to you as a group to protect our property and look out for the welfare when making regulations. Your job as a planning commission is to first and foremost develop regulations that protect the people and rights of Reno County first. When developing these solar regulations, you propose setbacks from primary residents versus property lines. Why is that? Does this provide Reno County landowners more or less protection? Since you are basing the setbacks from primary residents, would I be allowed to build a building in the future on my property closer to 500 foot from the solar facility? Will I have to get a waiver to build that close? When looking at surrounding counties' regulations, I noticed that several counties, like Harvey, propose setbacks from property lines. Would we not be smart to also develop regulations that are based on property lines? As a county, should we not err in the side of caution and make setbacks more protective rather than leaving our citizens in a potentially questionable situation? Large-scale solar facilities are relatively new in this part of the county, and there is not enough information to know what the long-term effects on the environment and the people will be in 10, 20, or even 100 years. Should we not be more restrictive and lean on the side of caution when developing these regulations? The current proposed regulations of 500 foot from nonparticipating landowners' principal building seems to be looking out more for the potential developer, enabling them to develop solar facilities closer to people's residences. I ask you to please reconsider the current setbacks and proposed, and make solar regulations based on property lines, and sway on the side of cautioning when determining these setbacks. I also want to really commend our neighboring counties, who I looked through their regulations, Butler, Harvey, and Douglas County. It looks like they really spent a lot of time looking at their regulations. And one of the things that really hit me in Harvey County's regulations was they said something about what was the primary purpose of the land. And that was to protect, for farm ground and to protect the environment. I ask you guys to consider that when looking at what is the purpose of the land in Reno County, especially in that Cheney Lake watershed. It is for the supply of water for Wichita, and also for all the environment that's there, the deer, the eagles. We live really close to there, and we enjoy the wildlife there. And my concern is, if we put solar in that area, what will happen to the water and the area there for the animals and the wildlife? So I thank you for your time, but please consider, you know, maybe changing these, especially looking at from property lines. So I have the ability to use my entire property instead of from my primary residence. Thanks for your time.
I do, but I've been rewriting everything that I wrote during here, so I don't know what I'm going to be saying. So maybe the time that I use might be extended because I can't read what I've written. So I'm going like, oh my goodness. So anyway, let me sort things. I've only got two pages, but then I rewrote so many things. I'm Jean Conkling. Don't have my time yet.
It's now starting.
I didn't give you my name and address.
Let me go through all that other. We start.
Okay. Yeah, so wait, so it's Jean Conkling, and it's 21806 South Road Acres Road. Pretty purry. So anyway, I'm going to try to read and comment on what I listened to, but it makes it a little bit longer, but I can cut off the end. So first, I'm going to pay thanks to the Commissioners for all the work that you've done, and not only for that work, but also for listening to and addressing the info gathered and the concerns addressed by these Reno County citizens. So I was going to say, trying to cut down on our use and dependence upon oil and gas while increasing our use of alternative sources of energy, including solar, is very important for us and our world right now. But we have to be careful with utility-scale facilities, wind and solar. And I want to express an appreciation to our valley's use of smaller-scale solar, which doesn't sound like this utility-scale facilities that we're talking about right now and that we're concerned about. Tonight, I was going to be focusing on just a few of the considerations. I feel important, but from listening to what people have said here already about soil erosion, protecting from that, and opportunities for damage to the water, it's obvious that this particular locations that are being considered around Cheney Reservoir, it's a totally inappropriate place for a large-scale solar facility or the wind facilities that we had. And so I put down that few, if any, studies really exist regarding the impact that utility-scale solar facilities may have when built with environments other than the desert-like areas that we're familiar with them being in. So particularly in water and wildlife-sensitive areas, it's not a great place, as reflected by the importance of Cheney Reservoir to our county economically and recreation, as well as to Sedgwick County, who needs that, and Reno, the protection of the water. And so, so do we really want to be one of those first studies on the facilities being built close to wilderness or wildlife, water and wildlife-sensitive areas? And so one recommendation I had is to extend our current moratorium will give the Planning Commission and the community more time to research and study the considerations and comprehensiveness of other counties' solar regulations, Harvey County, for example, in helping guide our county's research in updating and revising our regulations. So basically, solar energy providers need to be guided towards and held to standards that consistently exhibit conscientious and responsible siting, construction, monitoring, maintenance, mitigation, and decommissioning procedures in providing this solar energy. A few thoughts that I had had on that is for when they're in an area considering lots of wildlife issues, that the KDWP should be allowed sufficient and appropriate regulatory time to review and report their concerns on the construction process regarding protection of wildlife, as well as having an opportunity to provide environmental oversight. An official completed review and response back from KDWP about environmental concerns should be considered before the county approves any CUP applications. And at the minimum, you know, if it's anywhere near any of these kind of facilities, at a minimum, I think it's important that our county consider requiring that the utility-scale facilities follow the KDWP's typical recommendation to provide at least, and perhaps more, a three-mile buffer zone. three-mile buffer zone. And another important consideration is requiring solar companies to conduct scientifically rigorous, multi-year, pre, during, and post-construction surveys of wildlife and environmental issues. As well as making any of those environmental and those wildlife studies, those reports and their data publicly available. Now, they're calling all of that studies and surveys that are done, they're proprietary. And the other thing is to require wildlife permeable fencing around this solar facility or incorporating wildlife quarters to allow wildlife movement. Another thing is, I wanted to address was setback distances, just in general. I feel that the regulations that you provide, the distances should be based on distances from property lines, as several people have addressed, not a principal building. And from the facility footprint and boundary fencing, not just from the solar panels. The company, it should be from their footprint and their boundary. And just two more seconds, remember, I'm using up extra time. And the setback distances delineating a distinction between participating and non-participating landowners. And I just had a couple of other comments. You've done real well on some of the visual impact and auditory impact. And the visual, just think about also the animals, the birds and the night wildlife, kind of minimizing that lighting just to the facility. And then on auditory impact, just remember that decibel levels, are the comments in your regulations, are those maximum, the 60 decibels that is in the regs, is that a maximum, or is that an average? There's a big difference between setting a maximum and an average. And remember that decibels are a logarithmic scale, not linear. So, 60 decibels is 10 times louder than 50, 100 times louder than 40 decibels, and 1,000 times louder than 30 decibels. Thank you. Thank you for my extra time.
This will be short and sweet. I'm Norman Diggs, and I live at 4602 East Arlington Road, Haven. I agree with so much, and I'm very impressed with a lot of my neighbors and folks who live in the area, that the research that they've done. And what I'd like to say is, we should definitely go with, on the side of caution. We live there. It's, I haven't done the research, so I really appreciate, not as in-depth as what these folks have done. But I live there, I'm concerned, I have children, I have grandchildren, and it's a little disconcerting when you feel you don't have control or anything to say about issues that come up that get to where you live. And so, I appreciate your consideration. And again, as others, thank you for your labor here and your time. So, thank you.
James Schlickau, S-C-H-L-I-C-K-A-U, 11510 East Irish Creek Road. Don, please start the 10-minute clock. It is not my intent to pick through the language of the proposed regulation. However, I would like to see in addition, and that is the prohibition of commercial solar within the Cheney Lake watershed. For many of the reasons already expressed tonight, they've done a fantastic job. It's been brought up about Scotts Bluff, Nebraska. I'm not going to rehash that. However, a hailstorm damaged all the solar panels, which contain heavy metals. Now, I know for a fact that we'll have hail in this, in our area as well, in the southeast portion of Reno County, and we might even have a tornado. So, this is not unprecedented territory. I did want to touch on the, it was mentioned about HAB, the old industrial base down southwest of Yoder. This is not unique, that we could potentially have a water quality crisis in Reno County had happened in Yoder. In fact, when I was on the Board of Commissioners in 2011, the KDHE came in and gave us a very comprehensive happening of what happened to the groundwater quality there. Essentially, the naval base was built in '42, '43, and a lot of servicemen were trained there. When it was decommissioned, a big hole was dug, and everything was piled into it, including solvents and other things that contained compounds that, such as CT and carbon tetra chloride and CTE. I'm not a scientist, but I know those cause cancer. I wanted to say that that Yoder is outside of the Cheney Lake watershed, but the topography, it wants to flow towards, so any contamination wants to flow towards our Kansas River. The Cheney Lake watershed obviously goes to Cheney Reservoir, and again, many of the people have already stated, the city of Wichita and the greater Wichita area relies on that for nearly 70% of their water source. Beyond that, they use the equus beds. We've already been challenged with two, maybe three years of drought. I know the reservoir is already low. I have a feeling if something were to happen to the water quality within Cheney Reservoir, it would put more pressure on the equus beds, and I think it's going to really cause some restrictions of producers. I'm a producer, both cattle and crop production. And I think we'll see a lot of pressure to restrict that usage in order to take care of the urban neighbors to the east. Again, I don't want to belabor the fact, I think everybody's done a great job. I don't want to restate a lot of the things already stated. However, I will say, I want you to strongly think about the prohibition of a commercial solar development within the Cheney Lake watershed and other areas that we feel are sensitive areas in Reno County. Thank you for your service. Just underneath the gun there.
Any other comments?
Hello, thank you again for all the hard work you do. I've been a volunteer on many boards and commissions, so I understand. My name is Shanna Henry, and I live at 15614 Southeast 20th Street in Cheney, out in the country. So, I'm not actually a Reno County resident, but I am here as more of a concerned Kansan. I'm on a rural electric cooperative, the Central County Rural Electric Cooperative, and we have really wonderful energy rates because it is a cooperative. And we're owners of the cooperative. And we get to help make decisions about what is done. Just in their latest issue of Kansas Country Living, there's an article called "High Voltage", and it was just in the November issue, and it's about transmission cost disparity for Kansas electric co-op members. And I just highlighted some areas. Kansans are unfairly shouldering transmission costs for energy exported out of state. So, they did a cooperative study, a collaborative effort between Sunflower Electric Power Corporation, Midwest Energy, Inc., Kansas Electric Power Cooperative, Inc., and Kansas Electric Cooperatives, Inc., to inform electric co-op members of efforts to correct this inequity. One of the things they highlighted is in their "Did You Know?" section, "Low customer density contributes to higher transmission rates." So, those of us that live in rural counties and communities are getting an unfair transmission rate passed on to us for energy that's being exported from our state to other states. Another thing that I wanted to read from this article under "Searching for Solutions", "Kansas ratepayers should not bear the costs of exporting these renewable resources out of state. Kansas-based Generation and Transmission Cooperatives, GNTs, along with your local distribution electric cooperatives, are currently working with state and national lawmakers, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, the SPP, and others to move to a cost allocation methodology that corrects this inequity and follows the principle that the cost causer should be the cost payer." So, that is, I just wanted to reflect that about transmission rates and the unfair burden on rural areas especially. And thank you. Again, I'm not a Reno County resident, but I am on a rural cooperative that includes parts of Reno County. Thank you.
Anybody else? Somebody wants to go twice. Are there any questions from the planning commission to staff at this point concerning the regulations? Caution you that if we close the public hearing, that their comments towards the regulations are done. That if we close the public hearing portion, their comments towards the regulations are done. As an example, if there was suggested omission or suggested strikes, that would be, we would be done with all of that.
Okay.
Questions?
Our options are, our options are closing.
Is there anybody else from the public would like to give a comment?
May I ask a question? About the process?
About if it's procedural, yes, but not about the content.
No, it's about like, once you close this, then you make any changes you consider appropriate? And then do you have another public hearing, or is that it?
This is the voice right now. We take all of our information that we've collected through the public hearing, and once we close it, that's the input that we have to make the document. Am I close to that statement?
Thank you.
Consensus of the board? Good deal. Okay, we'll now close this public hearing. We want to thank you all for your comments, even though you wanted to go twice. We appreciate your time. This is a journey, and we need all of you for the ins and duet for this journey. We appreciate it. At this time, at this time, it'll be, I guess it's the pleasure of the board, what we want to do moving forward. There's a lot of information to digest, and I know just as late as today, Mark has given us some more input. I myself would like to take some time to review this. I'm not, by no means am I ready to make a decision right now. I don't want that to be a binder for the rest of you. I can make a decision if need be, but I would like some more time. I don't know what's the pleasure of the board.
I would agree with you.
Our next scheduled meeting is the 19th.
Yes.
Not the 19th, 16th?
16th.
16th.
16th, I believe, next Thursday is the next scheduled meeting. So...
I think, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, it's your meeting.
Go right ahead. I was bumping in on you.
You've closed the public hearing, and so now you can make your own changes, if you like, and I'll make those changes. If you want to think about, like, a hearing, then I think, you know, your motion would be to recess this meeting until a future date, place, and time. The public is certainly invited to come to that next meeting and listen. It just would not be any more public comment, nor would there be really much input from staff. You know, we're here at this point in time to make the changes to the document that you are requesting.
We recess to our next regular meeting on Thursday, the 16th of November, 4:30.
Here at the Public Works Facility. Okay. Still go with that? Okay, and moved and seconded to close until our next regularly scheduled meeting? And moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Shortfayer?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Gerson?
Yes.
Recessed till?
We are recessed until November 16 at 4:30.
4:30 PM in this room.